Okay, we're ready to start. We acknowledge, appreciate the land on which we gather is the traditional Anseated Territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation called Order. I just want to give a shout out to some staff members in Environment and Sustainability. Lori and I, along with 20 others, I believe Christine, went on the Rooted in Earth Tour at Victoria Park. And Simon Wilmot gave a great presentation on our tree inventory and what's being done to, what we're doing to be part of that recovery. Christine was the sidekick, Christine Gore, and she gave a great presentation on the artist that were there. And Katrina, Katrina Cristal. It was quite informative, and everyone that we spoke to were very appreciative of what was, what took place. And the artists, Marina Tatrina, is that correct? And I have, I know Brenda White Way, she lives in my neighborhood, lives in Ward Four. Ashley Ann Clark, Sarah Nickeldard, Christina Patterson, and the last being Katie Strongman, that gave a great presentation on her condolences letter, I believe it was. So it was a really interesting presentation. Kristen, is that art still up, or has it been taken down?
The installation was up for two days from the 20th.
So it's been taken down. Anyways, well done, thank you very much. Declarations of conflict of interest?
None.
None? Okay. Approval of agenda, we have four A, B, C, D, E, F. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Matar. All in favor? Counselor Duran?
In favor.
Okay. And as you can see, our interim CAO, Michael Russ, is here. He has all the resolutions to read and keep us all in order. Thank you there, interim CAO. First presentation is for, oh, approval of agenda. Moved by Counselor Ramsey, seconded by Deputy Mayor Yankoff. All in favor? Counselor Duran?
In favor.
Okay. For A, do you want to read the resolution first, or there are two, actually?
Moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove any trees, garbage, and other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of same at the owner's expense at the following properties in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlottetown, and that pictures were taken of the noted properties listed below without satisfaction, without satisfactory action taken to resolve the issue by the respective property owner. 15 to 17 Sydney Street, PID 338996, warning posted on June 17, 2024, and 224 East Royalty Road, PID number 192484, warning posted on October 3, 2024.
Questions called? Questions called. All those in favor? Counselor Duran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. And just a note for the public record, Counselor Beck is not present, I think he's still out of the province, and Counselor Duran is phoning in.
Moved by Counselor Bob Duran, seconded by Counselor Justin Matar, whereas the City of Charlottetown passed a policy resolution of April 10, 2000.
That is it?
Moved by Counselor Kevin Ramsey, seconded by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, that the Public Works Manager be authorized to tow and remove a derelict vehicle at the owner's expense in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlottetown at the following property located at 32 Centennial Drive, PID number 394759, warning posted on October 3, 2024. Pictures were taken and satisfactory action to resolve issue was not taken.
Questions called. So we're going to try the electronic vote?
In favor.
That's right. Good. Counselor Duran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay, the vote is nine zero. Okay. So those are the resolutions for Police, Protection, and Emergency Services. Next one is Water and Wastewater.
Moved by Counselor Bob Duran, seconded by Counselor Justin Matar, whereas the City of Charlottetown passed a policy resolution of April 10, 2000, that City Council confirm its policy not to entertain applications for water service to properties outside the municipal boundary of the City of Charlottetown without first receiving approval from City Council to do so. Be it resolved that City Council approves the request for service received from Gary Bell for water and sewer service to 629 Lower Malpeck Road, PID number 430884, and be it further resolved that the costs associated with the development or any future services will be paid by the property owner and services be billed with a 25% premium as a surcharge for services provided outside the City of Charlottetown municipal boundary.
Questions called. Just inform that YouTube is not picking up our votes, so we'll have to do it verbally. They're not picking them up. I like the technology. All those in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Duran?
In favor.
Go right ahead there, Counselor Twill. Just one second.
How much money was spent in the latest upgrades to the technology here in the council chambers? I know we spent some money to further develop and make the necessary upgrades and enhancements to the technology here in the chambers, so just like to get a ball, somebody give me some kind of an estimate or how much money was, was spent recently?
Can we take that as a question?
No, I know, but does someone here maybe know that off the top of their head? Senior management?
It's a no. No, 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 I know, I know, I, I, I'm doing it right now, Counselor. Just one second. So we're going to put it on hold, we'll get the answer, and you can bring it up. It's just a notice. They're not going to get the answer, just as Counsel McKinnon said. He brought something up, and we move on. So, Michael, can you take note of that?
So the question's not relevant, is that it?
No, it is relevant, but we get an answer next meeting. Okay. C, Economic Tourism Cultural Development Committee Resolution. Want to read that?
Moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor John McAllier, that Council supports downtown Charlottetown Inc.'s request to extend the 2024 Downtown Parking Forgiveness Program in the Business Improvement Area to include November of 2024, and further, that as indicated in the resolution approved by Council on September 24, 2024, the program applies solely to metered parking.
All those in favor? Counselor Duran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. Perfect. Strategic Priorities Communications Intergovernmental Cooperation Committee Resolution Bylaw Priority List. Now that is part of your package? Correct, Michael?
That's correct.
Okay.
Moved by Counselor Trevor McKinnon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Alana Yankoff, that Council prioritize the creation of new bylaws or amendment of existing bylaws noted below within the next 12 months. The Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Premises Bylaw, Nuisance Bylaw, Community Standards Bylaw, number two, Procurement Bylaw, number three, Council Code of Conduct Bylaw, number four, Procedural Bylaw, number five, Zoning Bylaw, number six, Emergency Measures Bylaw, number seven, Patio Bylaw, number eight, Capital Construction Bylaw, number nine, Fees Bylaw, and number 10, Parks and Park Usage Bylaw.
We have a couple of questions. We have a couple of questions. Counselor Twill, Counselor Matar, and Counselor McAllier.
Yeah, just looking over the list here, I see, you know, dangers and hazards, procurement bylaw. That's, that's been on the books for, I don't know, four or five years now. Don't know what the status is. Then I see Council Code of Conduct Bylaw. Who initiated this to be on the list and who spearheaded this request?
Counselor Beck's not here. Deputy, can you weigh in? Just one second.
Thanks, Counselor Twill, for that question. The list, I believe, has been put forward with staff's recommendation based on a combination of staff, management, and the council's survey results. So tonight, this is their recommendation. So if, as a collective, we want to make any changes to these 10, now is our time to make any adjustments that we want to make this evening. So as for your question of who's driving it, I think it was, it was based on survey results from senior leadership as well as council's surveys as well. So that's about all I've got on it, but it certainly, if anyone wants to make any changes, that's what we're here to do tonight.
Counselor Matar, welcome back to Counselor Twill.
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess when I'm reviewing the survey results, which ultimately I thought would have helped in the prioritization of the bylaws, but I believe over the last year, if not more, certainly during my time here, the procurement bylaw has been the number one thing that we've talked about on numerous occasions, even to the point of where recently our deferring resolutions to go back and get confirmations on various things. So I'd like to put a friendly amendment to this recommendation here, that the procurement bylaw be the number one, if it's in this particular order of the 10 priorities, over the Dangerous and Hazardous and Unsightly Premises Bylaw. And that's just based on, you know, I think we've all been in this discussion. I know, Counselor Twill, you've been a big proponent of getting the first procurement bylaw completed. So I find it strange to see it as number two, considering the discussion that we've had over this. So I would like to put that friendly amendment forward, if that's acceptable.
So you may get some more amendments to it. Do you want to accept each amendment as they come along, Deputy, or Counselor McKinnon? Both of you sit on the committee?
So if Counselor McKinnon agrees with me, I would say that we have the discussion and come up with, you know, now we know we've got one, and see what others, because I don't think, I think Counselor Twill still needs this question answered on how the Code of Conduct made its way high up the list. Are you still looking for the answer to that question?
Just one sec, just one sec.
And I, I think that either, either our acting CAO could maybe address that, and, but if Counselor McKinnon, if you think it's easier just to accept each friendly amendment, or maybe we should just have the discussion first and then come up with a list and how we want to?
So I think it'll be a collective friendly amendment if we make change. Is that all right, Counselor McKinnon? Because you sit on the committee also.
No, I agree with Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Counselor McAllier, then we'll come back. Counselor McCabe, welcome back.
No, thank you, thank you, Mayor Brown. And I guess, and I certainly recognize Counselor Twill, Counselor Matar's thing on the procurement bylaw, I certainly wouldn't have an issue in support of going to number one, but that wasn't the main, main point, although it's important. I just wonder how ambitious we are. We, we all know how long it's taken to be pushing this procurement bylaw on, and here we've got a list of 10, and we're talking about, you know, tackling them in the, you know, in the next 12 months. I just wonder, you know, it's certainly ambitious. I just wonder how realistic it is in terms of a 12-month window, it sounds. I, there's more people around the table here that got experience, but from what I'm seeing, it pretty, seems like a pretty ambitious timeline, so I just wonder if we're not being too optimistic with what we got laid out in this resolution. Thanks.
Counselor McCabe.
Thank you. I guess we're, just to internalize, I'm seeing these as 10, like different departments will work on these. It's not going to be just working on one specific bylaw. If we have police working on their two bylaws, they're going to come back. As far as we're Counselor McAllier saying, I see this as council's direction, we're saying this is a priority in 12 months. We want to see these come back to council and tip-top, and staff have recommended that they're able to do this. So to me, I don't think we should spend time debating whether or not they're going to. This will be direction from council that 12 months, we should see these bylaws up to date and ready to go. I'm seeing finance has procurement, and probably maybe the fees bylaw, I don't know who that falls to, but really, we should be able to start to see some of these coming forward sooner rather than later, would be my thoughts.
Thank you, Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship. I wonder if it doesn't make more sense to do a prioritization per committee, because Counselor McCabe is right. I mean, it looks like a lot when you look at 10, but if we break it down per committee, that becomes that committee's priority to deal with that particular bylaw. So the members on the committee can make sure that gets done. So that's what I would suggest.
We need to decide who's doing the patio bylaw, too.
So are you asking, are you asking to defer it and let it go back to committees?
Well, I think, I, I think you want to come in with a resolution that can prioritize it per committee, who's responsible for it. Like, I mean, one of the things, the patio bylaw, that's got to be discussed before next year. We've had a parking issue and it continues to get worse. So we're going to have to settle out how many spots are going to be allowed for patios, how many spots are going to be allowed, plus you look at all the construction going on that particular year. The emergency measures bylaw, well, sounds pretty important to me, emergency measures, I think you'd want to deal with that right away. So if you break it down per committee and have that as a committee priority, this is what we like, and we have a timeline on it when you want it done for that committee.
Michael, do you want to weigh in?
Happy to. Thank you, Your Worship. So just to clarify, the recommendation from staff is just that that's the top 10 list, not necessarily that staff would be working through those in order. So as mentioned by a number of counselors around the table here, there are a number of different bylaws in this list that fall under different departments, and so all of these bylaws would be moving forward concurrently with their respective departments, if that makes sense.
Counselor McAllier? Counselor Matar. Go ahead, Counselor Matar.
No, and I guess, so I put the friendly amendment out there, but I guess what, based on that information, I interpreted that this was in a sequential order of, because of the timeframe of which it takes to do these. So given the fact that they can run concurrently through different departments, I would retract my friendly amendment. It doesn't make sense at that point, but if there are three or four in a particular, as Counsel Bernard said, in a particular department, I think we should look to prioritize what those ones would be. And, and some of these might be like in, or Public Works and such, so, you know, they're going to get four or five of them done. If, I don't know how many of these are here with departments, but anyways, I thought they were going to be sequentially done and just given time constraints by the staff. So I retract the friendly amendment.
Counselor McAllier, second time.
Thank you. So just to, just for the record, and so I'm clear personally, so I'm understanding, and there's enough of senior leadership here, I guess, to give me a nod or confirm, I guess, that, you know, collectively as a group, you feel that this list can be accomplished in the next 12 months? Can anybody weigh in and give me an answer to that?
Michael, do you want to take a, take a stab at that?
Sure, happy to, Your Worship. I think this is a realistic list. 10 obviously is a lot of work, however, some of these are, we're just looking at updates and amendments, not drafting a whole new bylaw. With some of the bylaws, you know, more work will be needed to draft something from scratch, do any necessarily, necessary consultation, any other efforts that the committee and council want to go through in their efforts to update and draft this list. So I think this is realistic. That's why the recommendation came forward from staff.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah. Do you want to stand?
Please stand up. That's, thank you.
As for the, as for the capital constructions bylaw, brand new bylaw, I don't remember council ever giving direction to proceed with that one. I think some of the discussion was about that type of a bylaw, you know, working with the other municipalities, you know, adding, I think this is the one that a presentation was brought in, and, and that was all it really was, was just a presentation. But we never once said, oh, yes, we want to put more fees onto construction costs and developers. I think some of the collective talk was about reaching out to the other municipalities, and until we all did it as a group, why would Charlottetown start putting in extra fees for, for, for these types of projects with developers when the, when the other municipalities are not even looking at that one? So.
Reaching out to the construction.
Yeah, and reaching out to the construction. I mean, the initial feedback we got when that presentation was brought to council, and it was for information only, was not a positive feedback from any of the communities. So I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, if we really actually want to even develop that in the next 12 months until we actually go out to some stakeholders and et cetera.
Michael, capital construction bylaw, can you give some background on that? I think it was, was it all just fees?
That's my understanding, Your Worship. However, to the deputy's point, I think the effort around this is not necessarily to complete a bylaw within 12 months, it's about going through that entire process, which you kind of mentioned, going out and doing proper consultation. I know staff have been involved in that to date. So once we've gone through that process, then council would have an opportunity to make a decision on what they want to move forward with or not.
Okay. Counselor McCabe?
So maybe that, that could be scratched as something that will be done within 12 months, or you could work on something and have more discussion, because I don't, like Deputy Mayor said, I don't even know if there's been any indication that that's something we're interested in pursuing. So I think more work around that, on that list. But my thing was, take the patio bylaw, we know that crosses into numerous committees, whether it's police, public works, somewhere else, economic development. So I think we need even better clarification, needs to be broken down. One committee kind of has to be the overseer for that with input, similar to we do with other committees. It just gets really confusing to navigate that whole, that whole bylaw. I think someone has to take hold of that and, you know, work collaboratively within all our departments, but someone has to kind of hold that so that we can know who to go to when we're talking about the patio bylaw than trying to take six months to figure out who you need to talk to. So that needs to be more work on even, where do these fall?
Yeah.
To what committees?
Yeah, so that's why the bylaw proposal, this resolution is coming from Strategic Priority Communications Intergovernmental Cooperation. So that'll be the standing.
That'll be all worked through?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Counselor Bernard, second time?
Just to tag on to what Counselor McCabe was saying, I would think that the director would be responsible for that. When you get a number of them, the director will be responsible to lead, to do the lead on that.
They will be.
The reason I was standing up, I'm just wondering, some of these suggested, some of the ones we're looking at, like procurement bylaw, council code of conduct, capital construction bylaw, there must be something in there that someone's looking to change, which we don't know. Like, to say we want to update these, well, who's asking for what, and what is the updates we want to make? And I wouldn't mind, you know, if we're going to break it down for priority per committee, then what is the change that we're looking at?
Yeah. Good point. I, I know under the Dangerous, Hazardous, and Unsightly Premises Bylaw, both Deputy Mayor Yankoff and Counselor McCabe have been at the table when I, we kept bringing it up at planning, development, inherited standing committees, where are we at with the summary of offense ticketing bylaw?
Right, right.
That's already in place now.
Okay.
And I believe at the last standing committee on Police, Protective, and Emergency Services, I said, okay, when are we going to stop getting these resolutions for, to allow our?
Oh, yes, yes.
To allow our, to, that forces, that forces our zoning development bylaw officer to go out with council's approval. And that's, I believe, Deputy Mayor, you were there? The chief's going to work on it to make the changes to the hazardous, what is it referred to as the hazardous, dangerous, and unsightly premises bylaw? to, as the hazardous, dangerous, and on slightly premises bylaw? So, some stuff is being worked on. And, the procurement bylaw, yeah, that's been going on for some time. Counsel Twill.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to go back to the council code of conduct. I'd like to know who's driving this. Again, you know, the deputy mayor said, recommendation came from staff. I, I've had discussions with some of the counselors, and, you know, they're not aware of who's, who's, who's spearheading this. So, you know, again, if this is coming from senior administration, I'd like to know what their rationale and what their logic is. And, I don't see that as a top priority. We already have a code of conduct. I don't see that as a top priority. So, I think that, you know, I don't see that as number three.
Right.
Again, and if senior management's driving it, I'd like to know what, what's behind it.
Okay. Michael, can you report to that, or Dan, one of the other?
I guess I can speak further to the comments that the deputy mayor made, in that the process was, a survey was conducted with all of council and management, and that those survey results were kind of brought together and averaged across the organization to come up with a priority list. In addition, I believe there's discussion at the committee level, but perhaps Director Jenkins, our CFO, has...
Dan, do you want to take a opportunity? Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, through to Counsel Twill. So, my comments were just with respect to the, the code of conduct bylaw. There were some amendments to provincial regulations, MGA regulations for code of conduct, which came after our, our draft of the, of our code of conduct bylaw. So, they're not aligned properly with the provincial regulations, so there's some updates that need to be done there. That's, that's probably the biggest requirement. But, I think there were some discussions around code of conduct complaints in the process around how those would be handled. And, also, there, I think some, some of the counselors have some thought that, in some circumstances, it would be advantageous to have code of conduct complaints arbitrated, or mediated, or settlements attempted by parties outside of council. So, right now, all of council's responsible for kind of enforcing those, being the judge, jury, and executioner on, on code of conduct complaints. And, there was some discussion about maybe taking that outside. So, those were some of the issues around.
And, and Dan, I think we spoke about this before, integrity officer, and that the province has an ethics commissioner. Counsel Twill, you want to finish up?
Yeah. Yeah, I do recall that, because I was the one that recommended a retired judge. So, it takes the politics out of the code of conduct, which, you know, it's, no, no secret's been happening here the last few years. So, it takes, you know, weaponizing code of conduct, and it's truly impartial, independent, and truly objective. So, you know, I, I believe that's the right course of action. And then, as you pointed out, Mr. Jenkins, how it aligns with the other codes of conduct, and what, what the province is talking about. So, I, I hope that in the bylaw itself, that it is truly aligned with, what the province is talking about, and, you know, in that there's, you know, this, this so-called bylaw doesn't have added features or, or added items onto it that's not similar to what we'd see universally across the province.
Thank you. Counsel Duran?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm good. I, I don't agree with the capital construction, because there's, there's not much discussion we had on it. So, I'd like to see that out, but just go ahead, whatever you want.
Question? No, Counsel, no, Counsel Bernard, I already am twice. If I go third...
What's the question?
Question is, is to prove council prioritized the creation of new bylaws or amendments of existing bylaws noted below within the next twelve months. So, okay, but that's what I asked. So, you want it deferred?
Yep.
Okay. So, this'll hold it up a little bit. Okay, deferred?
To come back to a proper resolution.
Okay. Need a second for the deferral?
I have a second.
Well, no, no, he's got a deferral. He's got a, he's asking for a deferral. Anyone second it?
I'll second.
Okay.
Sure, sure.
Okay. So, the deferral's on the floor, so you only speak to the deferral.
So, the deferral, your worship, is just to bring it, take it back, and, and bring it back, that it's tightened up where the priorities are per committee, and what the changes that they're looking to make per each one. That's all I'm asking.
Okay. Counsel Twill?
No, I, I think, I think Counsel Bernard raises a good point, takes it back to the respective committees, further dialogue, further discussions. And, when we're voting on something, we need some information, okay? If we're going to prioritize, prioritize these, these bylaws in terms of priority, then we, we need some information. Have to be able to make an informed decision. Right now, with all due respect, there's a list here, and, you know, there's got to be some meat to the bones, and I don't see that with some of these, some of these proposed bylaws or amendments made to some of the bylaws. And, it gives a wrong impression to the community as well, you know? We've already heard discussion here, but capital construction bylaw, and that was received very negatively by the construction industry, yet it's on the docket. So, obviously, there's a disconnect.
Okay.
There's, there's a disconnect. So, that tells me, what else is there disconnect here with respect to some of these? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm not thinking that way. I'm not thinking that way. I think, I think that if we look at the procurement bylaw, Counsel McLeir, Chair Finance, has been pushing this. You have been pushing it.
Yeah, I have been pushing it.
The dangerous hazardous and slightly premises bylaw, we've been pushing that. The emergency measures bylaw, the deputy chief, fire chief here, Kent Mitchell's here, this is way outdated. Zoning and development bylaw, we know we have to amend that, because we're going through a process to, to overhaul the official plan. The patio bylaw, we know that that needs to be addressed. So, there's some that are definitely self-explanatory. Counsel McCabe?
And I'm speaking on the deferral. I won't be supporting the deferral, only, only because I really think that these already have been identified as, as bylaws that are requiring updating, whether they're too old, whether they're new, and we know that they're part of our governance that we need to do. I think the work has to start. It comes through the prospective committees. It's going to come back. It's going to show us what was, what's changed, and at that time, there'll be opportunity for discussion. But, for me, I think it's time to move these on. We've been surveyed. Staff have looked at the bylaws that are existing, and I think that they're asking for us to give them the stamp to start the process.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Just to clarify, so Counsel Bernard has a good point. We, we defer them back. We get a little bit more detail on, you know, is it new? What are the changes? What are the proposed changes? Because if we just start with this list as it is, then all of a sudden, for example, it's clear to the majority of us here, I think, that nobody wants to proceed right now with the capital constructions bylaw. So, if we take these all back to committees, and all of a sudden, staff starts doing all this work, then we can think, wait a minute, we all said we didn't want that. So, I think we're given a mixed message. So, taking these back to committee first, to, to halting any of that we don't want as a priority for now, might be, might be tedious exercise, but might be, in the long term, save some time for staff to start putting work into something that clearly council doesn't want to proceed with at this time.
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. I don't disagree that there's been enough discussion tonight when we're trying to approve this list. The capital construction maybe is one that we want to amend, to take that off the list, until it comes back with a little bit more information. But, as far as the other ones, I think that they were identified, and we should be able to start to work. I'd be willing to put on, after you vote on the deferral, an amendment to say that we take off number eight, and, for right now, as far as the approval.
No, I think the deferral is, is saying, send them back to the committees. So, you don't have to take it off.
Yeah.
Yeah. Question? Question's called.
Which question?
Deferral. On the deferral, which means it'll go back to standing committees to identify what's response, who's responsible for what. All those in favor of the deferral? Counsel Duran, yea or nay?
In favor.
Okay. For, all against the deferral? So, against is, I have Matarde, Ramsey, McKinnon. Okay, McKinnon, McLeir, and McCabe. Okay, so we're back on the resolution.
Just clarification, if you don't mind. So, because the deferral was lost, that means the capital construction bylaw, if, if this passes, this resolution passes tonight, that is instruct the senior staff to start working on a construction, capital construction bylaw, correct? Because the deferral was lost.
Stop right there. Counsel McCabe, just, Counsel McCabe has asked that she, if this, if this fails, the deferral, which it did, that I will ask for a friendly amendment. That's what she's going to do. She's going to get up and say...
But, Counsel Bernard...
No, no, Counsel Twill, we just answered the question.
The deferral was to send it back to the respective committees.
Yeah, well, she's saying, she, we voted against sending it back to the committees. Now, Counsel McCabe, correct me if I'm wrong, you're going to get up, ask a friendly amendment to Counsel McKinnon, Deputy Mayor Yankoff, to take capital construction bylaw off the list, correct?
I am asking for a friendly amendment to take eight from the list for now, until we have more opportunity for further discussion, to see if this is something we want to pursue.
Do you agree, Madam Deputy Mayor Yankoff? Hold on.
Hundred percent. I never wanted it there in the first place.
Counsel McKinnon? Okay, so, just, just one second. I got a question, too. Do you have a question? Anyways, so now you can take, I am being respectful, because you keep interrupting. Now, take number eight off the list, correct?
Second.
That, that, that's on, that's on the, that's on the friendly amendment. Counsel Twill, you've already spoken to the resolution twice.
Speaking to the amendment now.
Friendly amendment. Okay.
Who's your second? So, so, the question is...
Just one second. Who is the second?
So, the question is, okay, since nobody was in favor of the capital construction proposed bylaw, here's the question. How did it get on this list?
I don't know.
Well, somebody put it on the list. I'd like to know who put it on the list.
Richard, are you ready to answer that? Like, we're getting these investigative questions, and again, all it is, is a resolution to deal with bylaws that we've been talking about for the last four or five years, and now we got them in a list, and we're saying, okay, I want to know who did this, who did that. Can you explain it?
Director of Community Services, Richard McKeown. I think it's important for council to look at the report that is presented.
Oh.
And explains that the capital construction bylaw is not simply the levies, but this allows us to figure out how to get infrastructure in the ground to allow the city to develop. So, you might have a situation where there are a number of developers that are frontage along a road, and we need to figure out how to get that road in place. It's not necessarily the development charges. This is figuring out how to make development happen in the city. It's not simply the development charges. There's a lot more to a construction bylaw to help the city figure out how to get infrastructure in the ground, roads made, so that we can have development.
So, Richard, that's on page eighteen and twenty of your, could you just turn to it there, Counsel Twill? You'll see the background. Richard, can you read that part? Did you just give a summary of that capital construction bylaw?
Yes.
There. I knew it wasn't just about fees, but anyways, the friendly amendment is there. Do you want it to stay on?
I'm reading that.
Yeah. Friendly amendment's moved. You're all right with that?
That...
Remove it. Go ahead.
That's why, your worship, I think...
Hold on. No, just one second. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. And, the first sentence in the description for capital constructions bylaw is, the primary purpose of a capital construction bylaw is for cost recovery. So, does that cost recovery not mean getting money from, from developers?
Mr. McKeown?
Yeah, so absolutely. Right now, when a new subdivision goes into the city, the developer pays for all of those costs. So, we have situations where there might be a number of developers along the way, and you might have one who's not ready to go forward with their development, and if that property in the line is not ready to go forward, then it could be holding up development further down. When development takes place in the city, it's always the developer who covers all the costs. We need to figure out how to make that happen in situations where it's not perfectly in line with something that we, that we have. I mean, there are situations that this bylaw will help us to understand how we can get costs recovered, because developers do pay for development in the city.
Okay. Counsel Bernard, second time.
Yep, thank you. And, that's why I'd ask for, have this come back and have it, each committee and the reasons they want to change it. But, now, if it's going to stay like this, for example, you got one to ten as priority. So, number ten being Parkinson Park uses. So, does that mean that...
No, no, that's, no.
If this moves ahead, what's, what's the actual priority now?
Michael, just explain the one to ten numerical values.
Yeah, so again, just to clarify, the list isn't necessarily that we're going to be working on each bylaw, you know, one, and then two, and then three. The departments will be...
That's what it says, that's what it says here. That's in the resolution.
It's a list of ten that are for priority. So, staff practically...
Counsel prioritized the creation of the new bylaw amendment, existing bylaws. So, counsel prioritized the creation of the new bylaws, one, two, three, four, to ten. It's what it's asking in the resolution.
Those are the ten, but it doesn't mean it's one to ten.
Well, it's what I'm hearing, that the director's saying, and what this is written, is two different things.
The, the one to ten is not, number one will be dangerous hazardous and on slightly premises, number two, it will be, each department will be working on those ten new bylaws or amendments.
That would put bullets.
Yeah.
But, it still says counsel prioritized the creation of the new bylaws, the amendment of the existing bylaws within the next twelve months. So, if you're going to prioritize it, they're asking us to prioritize.
We can add, we can add, not numerical value, but I, I don't want to complicate. It's, it's clear to me. It's one to ten.
Create, create, because some of these are updates.
Anyway, it would've been just as easy to come out per committee.
Yeah. Counsel McKinnon?
Yeah, just as Counsel McCabe stated, the first line says that council prioritized the creation of new bylaws, but we're not creating new bylaws here. We are working on existing bylaws. Am I not correct?
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah. Counsel Matarde?
Thank you, your worship. I'd just like for Richard, just to clarify again, on the capital construction bylaw and the capital cost recovery bylaw, is that related to the presentation that we had by Manager Scott regarding the collection of fees from developers? There was going to be some consultation that was going to occur. We had a presentation. We never adopted that or signed on. Is this related to that in any way, shape, or form? Yes or no?
Yes, it could be a component, but there are other situations where you have a developer on one side of the street, and another developer on the other side of the street, and one's ready to go and the other isn't. How do you get that road constructed?
Sure. So, does moving forward with this put us in a position to invoke those other things that we're not ready to have that discussion on yet? Yes or no?
So, we, we, there are other, there are other things that we need to get figured out in addition to or aside from that. What I'm, I'm here at the mic, because I don't want you to hold this up, because you're stuck on one aspect that could be in the development of that bylaw, that's going to hold up all those other things that are important. And, we're hearing the discussion and understanding that piece. But, if you don't go forward with this, then you, I, I, you will regret that decision, because it will be holding up things that we're trying to get through now to allow development to happen in the city.
Okay. Counsel McCabe, let's wrap this up.
My second, yes. I think what, what I'm hearing is those extra fees and stuff that have caused anxiety for a lot of us as far as being put on developers. That might be a recommendation that comes from the bylaw when we eventually see it. But, you're got to bring that to us. We got to look at that. We got to accept the bylaw at that time. At that time, we'll have opportunity to say, no, we're not interested in extra fee charges going to developers. But, until we have something in front of us, there's nothing we can do. So, what they're asking for is for us to allow them to start the work on that. We do know that there are areas where three and four developers are coming together, and there's nothing clearly defined for them to be able to put roadways in, to put waterways in. So, they're asking for that to be clarified, and that is our job, is to provide the governance around that.
Question? Question's called.
I don't want the amendment.
Friendly amendment's, you're voting, you're voting on this, because...
We wanted it as is.
Yes, it was. So, you're voting as is. Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Y'all were raising your hands. Question's called. Deputy Mayor Yankoff, yea? Matarde, yea? Counsel Twill? Counsel Ramsey, yea? McLeir, okay. One, two, three, six, correct? And those against? Okay, no. Counsel Twill, no. And Counsel Duran?
No.
No.
Okay, six to three. Okay. You wanna go to the next one, sir?
Moved by Counselor Mitchell Twill, seconded by Counselor Terry Bernard, that as per the recently advertised tender for the Victoria Park Shore Protection Project, the City of Charlottetown accepts the bid of one million, one hundred forty-nine thousand, seven hundred twenty dollars plus applicable taxes from J.E. Matheson Construction, and that the amount of forty-six thousand, nine hundred forty-eight dollars plus applicable taxes from Kohl's Associates Limited for engineering services and project management be accepted, and that the city approves increasing the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five capital budget for this project to one million, three hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars from one million, eighty thousand dollars, and makes a request to the Prince Edward Island Infrastructure Secretariat to grant approval to reallocate the required additional funding from the Canada Community Building Fund, and further that the mayor and CIO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question's called, okay.
Um, Mayor Brown, I, I see-
I don't even know what Counsel Dron, we can't see you out there, I call you the phantom counselor, what do you have to say, old buddy?
Well, thank you. I see, uh, my son-in-law bid on this, so I'm in conflict, so I can't vote.
That's right, you didn't declare it the first, so we didn't know that. That's all right, just turn off the TV. Okay, so, we are, we have one member in conflict, okay, that's the only one? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay, eight to zero. Okay, Counselors. Counselors, okay.
Thank you, Counsel.
And Dron, in conflict.
Yeah. I don't have a country.
Just one second, Counsel Bernard, hold on, just one second. Okay, Counsel Bernard, did you wanna introduce this?
Yes, um, Your Worship, right now it's for information only, but I know Katrina and Kristen and Jessica, Katrina's online, I believe, and-
Is she?
Kristen and Jessica are here. It's been a lot of work going into this city's future climate action plan, and so there's an update to let council know the work that's been done and so far, and where we're moving the next, the next steps before the action plan comes to council, so, yeah.
Who starts?
Katrina.
Okay, Kristen and Katrina?
Kristen or Katrina, yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, hello everyone. I'm here to provide an update on the climate action plan and walk through the instructions on providing feedback at the list of draft actions. I will take a moment to introduce myself, my name is Kristen Gore, and I'm the Sustainability Project Coordinator with the Environment and Sustainability Department. I've been working closely with Katrina Crystal, our Climate Action Officer, on the development of the climate action plan. I will quickly review our agenda for this evening, I'll start by providing a brief background on the project, I will also provide an overview of where we are currently, I'll then get into the core of our presentation and speak to the plan structure and instructions, providing feedback. Finally, I'll touch on the next steps for the projects, and a question period will open at the end of the presentation. In the past, the city's sustainability efforts have been guided by an integrated community sustainability plan and a community energy plan. These plans have both reached the end of their life. With that, and in light of the global climate crisis, staff have been working to combine and build upon these documents to create a comprehensive climate action plan. This plan will guide the city's work toward climate action, climate adaptation, reducing local vulnerability to the impacts of climate change, and climate mitigation, reducing greenhouse gas emission across all sectors. Work towards this plan was split up into three phases. Phase one was completed in spring 2023 and involved background research, municipal benchmarking, and high-level conversations with the community to inform the city's approach to developing this plan. We are currently well into phase two. This phase involves the development of the plan itself, up until now, numerous reports, such as the risk and vulnerability assessment, and community greenhouse gas inventory have been created to inform the action set. Additionally, there has been ongoing engagement with the public, community partners, and city staff across the organization. Once the plan is complete, we'll move into phase three, implementation, which will involve carrying out the action set in the plan, as well as ongoing monitoring and reporting. With a great deal of background work completed, we have now formatted a draft list of goals and actions for inclusion in the plan, and are undertaking a final round of community engagement to validate these actions. The current set of draft actions were created and based on extensive public engagement completed in spring 2024. A what-we-heard report was recently released that outlines the finding of this engagement. Also, informing the actions was input from a working group of approximately sixty-five community representatives from key collaborating organizations, other levels of government, and city departments. The what-we-heard report can be accessed on the city's public engagement platform, Charlottetown Hall. I'll now speak to the plan structure. Based on feedback outlined in the what-we-heard report, as well as the workshops with the working group and one-on-one conversations with city departments, a set of actions were developed. They were organized into a structure, as you can see, outlined here, leading with the guiding principles, then broken down into themes, coordinating subthemes, goals, actions, and targets and key performance indicators. The themes, subthemes, goals, and actions are currently available for review. The guiding principles, targets, and KPIs will be released with the completed plan. With the draft goals and actions compiled, the project team is now seeking input from council and the public to validate these actions before finalizing the plan. To do this, we are using an interactive online platform. This platform mirrors the structure of the plan and allows users to navigate through the various levels. You can see the homepage pictured here on the slide. If you click on one of the themes on the homepage, you can move through the subthemes that fall under it, followed by the goals and actions. At the goal level, there will be a feedback box, you can review the actions under the goal and consider if there are any actions you think are missing under that particular If you click on the feedback section, it will open up this box where you can suggest any actions that you think may be missing, or any general feedback that may be related to the goal. There is a spot for a name and email, but this is optional. We do ask that you fill it out, though, if there may be a need to follow up with you regarding your comments. Once you've typed in what you'd like to include, you can hit send, and it will be submitted. This can be repeated as many times as needed for different goals. If you click on a particular action under a goal, you'll get to a page with additional feedback specific to that action. This feedback box here provides more specific guiding questions, seeking to learn more about your support for the action, why you do or don't support it, and how you might like to see it altered. You can navigate to the various actions as previously described by starting from the homepage, clicking on the theme, the corresponding sub-theme and goals, or you can also get to a complete list of actions by clicking on the actions tab at the start of the homepage. To submit feedback on a given action, you simply click on it and find yourself on the previously shown page, the action feedback box. You are more than welcome to review and submit feedback on the entire plan, or focus in on areas that be most relevant to your experience or expertise. To provide input, a link to the online platform, as well as comprehensive instructions and supporting materials, are available at charlottetownhall.ca/climaction. Those supporting materials and comprehensive instructions will go over what I just delineated. In addition to the online platform, a printable workbook is also available for those who'd prefer to provide written input. Additionally, if this is, if it is helpful to get an overall visual of the structure of the plan, an image reflecting this is also available on Charlottetown Hall. We are requesting that council review the sections of the plan that are of interest or concern, either through the online platform or through the printable workbook. Feedback is being accepted until November seventeenth. Okay, I'll now quickly touch on the next steps. In addition to the online engagement, an in-person engagement session is planned for November thirteenth. It'll take place from five to eight PM at the Charlottetown Library Learning Center. All council members are invited to attend. Based on the feedback obtained through this round of feedback, the draft actions will be finalized, they will go through a round of implementation planning, through which we will continue collaboration with our project working group to determine targets, timelines, and key performance indicators. We anticipate that the final draft of the plan will be complete by January 2025, and will then be presented to council for endorsement in early 2025. We are at a stage in the planning process where it is critical to get your input. Climate change requires immediate and ambitious actions to reduce the impacts the Charlottetown community will experience. This work must be a priority for the city as we move forward. It is essential that the goals we set are valued and supported by mayor and council, and that each of you are advocates for this plan's implementation. We ask that you please take the time to review the draft actions at this time, so we can address any concerns you may have before finalizing the plan and requesting your endorsement. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to reviewing your thoughts. We're now available for questions, I will note that as lead on this project, Katrina Crystal, Climate Action Officer, is online as well.
Thank you, Kristen. Counsel Twill?
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. Certainly from an analytical perspective, it's well thought out, and certainly looking forward to the process being completed. If you look at this structure, your process, and community engagement, how does this line up with processes and, and procedures in terms of formulating a plan for climate change across Canada? More specifically, if you were to look at the Canadian Federation of Municipalities, has, is there, is there any similarities, differences, what, what have you taken from other jurisdictions, for example, that you've implemented, implemented in this particular
Kristen, do you want me to speak to that?
I was just gonna defer to Katrina, thank you, Katrina.
Um, okay, thank you so much, through you, Mr. Chair, thanks for the question, um, I don't know, it's a bit of a, um, we've taken, I guess the short answer is that we've taken inspiration from many different places to construct the engagement process that we've undertaken. We've been working with ICL Canada through their Building Adaptive and Resilient Communities Program, as well as with Quest Canada through their Net Zero Communities Accelerator Program. So these are two nonprofit organizations, and they run programs that support municipalities in our climate action planning, and so they work with municipalities across the country, and have many great tips and supports for helping us do this. So we've drawn a lot of inspiration from them, and in that, learned a lot, and done things that other municipalities have done and that are tried and true, and I think we've also made it our own based on what we know about the Charlottetown context. So, you know, we know the strength of community in PEI, and, and how much value there is in, in working together, and so with that, I think we've taken maybe a more collaborative approach than some other municipalities take, not to say that nobody else has done it this way, they certainly have, but, um, but yeah, working really closely with community organizations to conduct engagement with those communities they represent. So, yeah, hopefully that answers your question.
Counsel Twill, follow up?
It certainly gives me an insight. When you look at resources, natural resources, you know, from a traditional, from a conventional sense, you know, water, air, resources like that, how does that factor in to, to, to what we're zeroing in on in this process? Like, looking at our natural resources here in Charlottetown, and, and, I don't know, that also has an impact and effect on the province as well, you know, everything from gas emissions, all those, all, all of that criteria. Can you give me a thumbnail sketch from that perspective, when it comes to our natural resources?
Through you, Mr. Chair, thank you Counsel Twill, I will defer again to Katrina.
Sure thing, through you, Mr. Chair, I think what I'll say is that, you know, of course, those are essential components of this plan and of climate action, a lot comes down to our natural areas and green spaces, our water, our trees, and things like that, and then, of course, you reference greenhouse gas emissions as well, so all of those things are, are baked into the plan, and, and as you review it, you'll see, you know, there's theme areas around natural assets, there's theme areas, or at least actions around water conservation, there's many that are targeted at greenhouse gas reductions, yeah, so I think that you'll, you'll see those clearly demonstrated and highlighted throughout the plan.
If I can add to Katrina's comments-
Sure, go ahead.
Um, through you, Mr. Chair, Counsel Twill, I do encourage you to review the full plan with the comments that you've made regards to natural resources, as Katrina's mentioned, there's multiple sub-themes that touch on the various natural resources that you've listed. With those actions that you see there, you'll be able to see the specific plans for each of those natural resources, and it might provide more information to your question, and then you can provide specific feedback for each.
Counsel Bernard, Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's, you know, I, I had the privilege of going through this with Katrina and Jessica a couple weeks ago, and it'd be nice, Jessica, do we have the live one up that we can actually show and bring up the actions? I, I think, to Counsel Twill's question too, and a lot of those questions, a lot of the answers are within this, but I, I think they need to see how this is structured. So, you have your action items, and then if you can open up those action items, this particular example we have on our page, you get E1 up to E6, and I think if we, can we, can we open that live?
Uh, through you, Mr. Chair, so our computers aren't connected to the screen, just Tracy's, but it's all at charlottetownhall.ca, and I don't know if there's a way, Tracy, that we can do that quickly or not, but-
I, I think it would be a lot easier for everybody to understand, because there's a lot of work went into this, and there was a lot of consultation, and I think, once you see this in, in action, you, you've got your heading, so the one on our page, improve energy efficiency in residential, commercial, and heritage buildings, then there's actions, and you can open up those actions, which is recommendations to move ahead, and you can also have your comment if there's, you think there's actions that are not there, that you wanna add to it, or you have commented on those particular actions in each heading. Now, the other thing, Katrina, while you're on the line too, I'd like you to, can you, can you let us know how many public and stakeholder engagements we had, and who the stakeholders are?
Certainly, again, through you, Mr. Chair, so we worked with five different community organizations, as well as a, a group of community members, so the five organizations were the Native Council PEI, BiPuck Usher, Creative PEI, STEAM PEI, who works with children and youth, and the fifth was Kristen or Jessica, why am I blanking on this? What if, oh, it was Fusion Charlottetown, so representing youth, but like adult youth. And so each of those organizations offered an event on our behalf to engage with their communities, and then we also worked with a group called the Charlottetown Sustainability Citizens Group, and they also, they helped pop-ups and things like that, and did some surveying, and all of it to understand community priorities around climate action and what the community would like to see. So through all of that, as well as the events that we as city staff held, so we held an event at the library and did an online survey, we engaged with over nine hundred people, I believe it was, Kristen, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yeah.
To Katrina's point, it was nine hundred and forty individuals, and that doesn't include the working groups as well, that's just the public community engagement, the working groups have about sixty-five key community stakeholders.
So, the, the point is, you know, there's been a lot of engagement, and there still will be more engagement, but if you can go on the live program, it, it's really detailed, and it's really in layman's terms, and I would encourage you, this, this here is, this is just an overview, and it doesn't really do the program justice, so I would really encourage you to go on citi-hall.ca and bring this up, because it's a lot easier then, you see all the actions, and you see what, what, what they're recommending, and then you can put your comment in, if you think there's anything missing, but it's a lot of really good work so far, so.
Jessica, do you wanna add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to quickly jump in, because I really wanted to commend- Yeah, I just wanted to quickly jump in, because I really wanted to commend Katrina and Kristen for the huge amount of work they put in to hear from the community. They went above and beyond as far as plan development, and really thought outside the box for how we can work with, really closely with working groups from different sectors, and work with community groups who have clients that maybe will speak better to them than they will to us. So hats off to them for the great work they did on the community engagement for this.
Just like what they did and rooted in there, did a great job, so, yeah. Counselor, can I just go, Counselor McCabe, come back, give you a second. Counselor McCabe.
Mine is just a comment to Counselor Bernard and his committee, as well as the staff too. Very user-friendly, very, Counselor Twill, if you click on that thing, it's very clear how to navigate that system, like, for people that would struggle with that. And amazing job, actually, really good information for someone like me who has a lot to still learn in this area, so I just wanted to say, great job.
And just before we go on, Kristen, that's, that's on, again, as you said, charlottetownhall.ca, climate action plan. Everything that we're talking about is right there, correct? Yeah, and it's been there, it's been there for some time. And for nine hundred and forty participants, that's better than any political poll that I know. Counselor Twill.
Thank you.
Yeah?
One of the things, one of the challenges that we as a municipality have, no different than other municipalities across Canada, is when we look at climate change, and how you balance that with, for example, economic development, I'll be a little more specific. Charlottetown has become a tremendous destination for cruise ships, but I get asked from residents in this city, but how much water is consumed by the cruise ships? And is that something that this process will, will examine and look at? And that brings up the point I brought up earlier about our natural resources, which is so important to us as a municipality. You know, the protection and preserving our water, and making sure that we, you know, take care of it, not just for today, but the next fifty years ahead, and how that impacts and effect on the cruise ship industry. So will you be looking at those types of examinations? Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counselor Twill, for your question. I will make one brief point to it, and then I'll defer to Katrina about the specific action towards the cruise ship. But I do want to note that with your commentary about the balance between our natural resources and other areas like economic development, that's where our collaboration with city departments has been absolutely integral to this process. We've had multiple one-on-one meetings with economic development in order to evaluate these actions that have been proposed before you. Again, I will defer Katrina in a moment, but I do want to note that this is the exact type of feedback that we're looking for, so I do encourage you to go to that section of the plan and provide the feedback through the causal platform, as that will be considered and integrated into the plan moving forward. In regards to the specific question about water usage through cruise ships, I will let Katrina speak to any actions that might be relevant.
Thanks, Kristen. Yeah, a couple of things there. Exactly like Kristen said, we've been working closely with city departments, including economic development, so there's been a lot of great conversations happening there. Another thing that I'd like to highlight is that we will be bringing to council, when we bring the finalized plan, an economic impact assessment that some of the partners that we're working with are completing for us. So stay tuned for that. We don't really have details yet, but I think that'll be a really interesting piece of information for both staff and council. In terms of the question about the cruise ships specifically, there's no doubt that there's a big environmental impact associated with cruise ships, and that it's of concern. I can't speak directly to the, the impact in a quantified way, but we can certainly get you that information. I can say that Port Charlottetown is on our climate action plan working group, and has been engaged in those conversations. And I also know that they're working on their own sustainability efforts, and I think that it would be great for us to work together on those moving forward as well, which is the intent with these working group members, is to continue these conversations into the implementation phase. However, I will also note that while at one point there was a goal in the climate action plan, list of goals and actions around cruise ships, I don't believe that there is anymore. So as Kristen said, this is exactly the type of feedback we're looking for, so I would also encourage you to please go and add that piece of feedback in through the platform, and we can, we can certainly look at incorporating something specific that directs us to, to work on that issue.
Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just in response to Counselor Twill's question there about the water, myself, Counselor McLeire, and we were doing one of the tours recently, and it was the eclipse, I think it was the Celebrity Line, but a lot of the ships coming in don't take any water. They have their own filtration system on the boat that re-filter, repurpose all the water that's on, on the ship, so there's not as much water being taken as, as what's being posted on social media, where some of these comments are coming from, but some of the ships are repurposing their own water through a filtration system.
Counselor Bernard.
Yeah, no, I was just going to say the same thing. It's a desalination process that the cruise ships have now, they can, they can, they can process, they take in saltwater, and they can process it as the fresh water. So not all the cruise ships are taking in water, but if memory serves me right, I think I, I think Richard's still here, I think the date, we're still using less water today, twenty twenty-four, than we were in two thousand and six, I believe.
Nineteen ninety-four.
From me?
Before nineteen ninety-four. We're below.
Richard can clarify that, but, yeah, so we've grown a lot since two thousand, and we're still using less water, so I think a lot of it is, is our, what do you call it there, the?
Neers?
Yeah, the different processes to save water. So it's obviously made quite an impact, so to be, you know, twenty, twenty years later, we're still using less water in Charlottetown than we did twenty, twenty-five years ago. But the cruise ships are improving, and, yeah, a lot of them, especially the newer ones, have desalination processes on the cruise ships.
Counselor Twill.
Thank you.
I think that's good, but I think what's really important is that we need that accurate information to be presented to the community at large, because, like I said, I do get asked those questions, and, and, you know, since we're talking about, you know, our natural resources, and, and climate change, and all those goals and aspirations that we're striving for, I think it's a good exercise, and I think, you know, we need to use that as an example, and have that examination to come up with, you know, how much water's actually being used, you know, what the projections are, for example. I mean, we're talking about the cruise ship industry, which is gonna, you know, continue on. I mean, it's great for our city, it's great for business, it's great for economic development, but at the same time, how do you balance that with, you know, protecting, protecting this, this valuable resource, not only for today, but the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty-five, thirty years? So I bring that up because I think it's something that needs to be examined, based on the feedback I've received from residents. Thank you.
Okay. Kristen, just on page thirty-three, I think it's the start of the presentation, the Integrated Community Sustainability Plan and the Community Energy Plan, those publications are now gone, correct? I just want to clarify that? Or Jessica, Katrina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By gone, do you mean that they are no longer available to the public, or that they're out of date?
Are we updating them?
Those are, those two plans that you're referring to are out of date. The climate action plan is intended to build upon those documents and bring them together into one formal plan.
So we will have a digital report that will go out to the community and say, this is the climate action plan for the city of Charlottetown, the race to, what, twenty fourteen, or twenty forty net zeros that we're looking at, or twenty fifty? Jessica?
Through you, Mayor Brown. So one of the, I guess, one of the situations with the current sustainability plan is that our target is different than the province's, so the work they're doing will bring us in alignment with, with alignment with the province to reach the twenty forty goal.
Okay, great. But there will be a digital report that anyone watching or trying to find out what's going on. I know there's, the climate action plan is on charlottetownhall.ca, but the finalized plan...
All the work that's been done to date, at the What We Heard report, the draft actions for review, that's all on Charlotte Town Hall, and then we'll come back to council with the full report when it's complete for endorsement.
Okay. Counselor Bernard.
Your Worship, just on that, so there's an in-person public engagement November thirteenth at the Charlottetown Library. Implementation planning for this report will be November twenty twenty-four. The draft finalization is to, between December and January, and it'll be presented to council in early twenty twenty-five, the climate action plan.
Yeah, I just, again, those two reports that are on the beginning of your presentation, they were great reports going out of the community, so this will be a follow-up. Doesn't have to be a heard copy, but a digital copy, that'll be fine.
Thank Kristen and Katrina and Jessica for that. This was information only, but I think it was good that council sees this, and we would really like everyone to go in and give your feedback on this report, if you would. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Bernard, for your support. I do want to affirm and stress that all of this information that was presented today is available on charlottetownhall.ch/climatchange. Everything can be found there.
The icon's right there, you just click it on. It's easy. Okay, new business. Counselor McKinnon just forgot to mention something under one of the resolutions, but do you know what? Can you just send a note to Michael? Is that all right? I know that, I'm just...
I was asked to ask the question about the resolution. I know it's voted on, it's done. It's not a game changer, it's just information that the public is going to be, need this, I believe.
You all right with that, Counselor Twill? Have you answered that question?
Quality and fairness.
Okay, ask the question.
I will defer to the honorable member.
No, no, no.
Go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
Regarding your resolution on the contract going out for the park, the question that was given to me here tonight, what will happen with the road? Will the road be shut down, and when will work start?
Frank around? Oh, maybe Counselor Twill knows, Counselor Twill, your project manager?
That's a good question, and you know what? For me to even try to fake it, I'm not, I'm not going to do that, but I will get you the information tomorrow morning.
Wow. Thank you very much. Thank you. And just one other thing, please take a look at that resolution regarding the strategic priorities and the priority list. Look over what departments and standing committees will be responsible for each, so that you know what's going on. I can tell you right now, when it says capital construction bylaw, department TBD, to be determined, standing committee TBD, to be determined. So I'd really like to have those filled in, so that when we start working on these, Michael and Dan and Richard, we know who's responsible. Michael?
Communicating that to us.
Yeah, because there's all, because procurement bylaw, it says TBD, standing committee TBD, but I know what it is, it's finance administration. Michael, can you just make sure that is taken care of for each of these ten priorities? Correct? Go ahead.
We can certainly do that.
Okay. Counselor McLeire, do you want to move a resolution?
Yeah, no, just, just staying with this thing on the, on the prioritization or whatever, I don't know. Would it be reasonable to expect, maybe we could have a quarterly update where we are as we go through the next twelve months?
Going to have to for the next month, to tell, tell us what, what committee's going to take care of, and what department?
Where we're at, and what kind of progress we're making, and we, you know, just some kind of, it doesn't have to be monthly, but, you know, quarterly, or...
Monthly checkup. Don't go to a doctor. Closed up?
Yeah, that's, that's why it would have been good to have each committee, each committee with their priorities, so the chair can make sure that those get done. But anyway...
You want to move? Move a resolution? Move to adjourn? Moved, seconded by Counselor Twill? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.